I think it's a very good presentation as well. I think Robert, his staff did a great job as well as all of the department heads and their contributions to the budget. It's my pleasure to present the attached annual operating budget for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen for the town. The Finance Committee met on May ninth to review the proposed budget along with the five-year projections. Following that meeting, the City Council held its budget workshop on May twentieth. We had a large PowerPoint presentation and went through all those slides that we put up, about fifty of them. That was followed by a goal-setting workshop on May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for a couple of other items where it was for discussion. In broad summary, the town continues to be very self-reliant and is consistently budget revenues and expenditures conservatively. In fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, we'll receive general fund revenues totally more than ten point eight million, balanced against operational expenditures of ten point four. Thirteen, fourteen does project a healthy outlook on current and future year finances. However, the town does remain dependent on two primary revenue sources, and that's the property tax revenues that we receive and the parcel tax revenue. These two sources represent eight point seven million dollars in revenue and eighty percent of the town's revenue budget. Significant negative changes in either of these two revenue sources would have a significant effect on the town's ability to continue to provide services to the community and would create an ongoing structural deficit. Additionally, within the seven point six million in property tax revenue, there is about seven hundred thousand dollars in educational revenue augmentation funding. This revenue was consistently a target of state year after year as they seek to steal it from local governments at the balance of their budget. As a result, staff budgets these revenue sources conservatively in its fiscal forecast. And we are with self, while self-reliance is certainly an enviable position to be in local government finance, it also means that the town must be vigilant and protective of its existing revenue sources and identify new revenue sources as appropriate. You have before you in the staff report that goes along with the budget that cover memo, it outlines each fund within the town and how that fund has impacted revenues to expenditures. But what I'm going to do is go down the major fiscal changes component of that same report, and that's on page five with ten. The major fiscal changes areas notes those areas where the budget has significant variances, positive or negative, and highlights those areas that staff might determine for additional amendment based on the budget and goals workshops. A major fiscal change is a variance of more than ten percent in a neat line item that results in a swing of more than ten thousand dollars. By department, major fiscal changes in thirteen, fourteen are listed here. For the City Council budget, there's an increase of twenty-four thousand and sixty-eight dollars that goes directly to your salaries.
Yeah. I don't think so.
And very generous healthcare.
I'm feeling sick.
I was just making sure it won't stow.
Derek's gonna be very sick when he retire.
That swatch. The relocation of the, the impact for that is the relocation of the election cost from the formerly non-departmental now intergovernmental departmental, department. That's an increase of about fifteen thousand and the relocation of the high-speed rail support from other governmental relations to this department as well, that's ten thousand, and a decrease in office furniture of eighty-four hundred within that department. So that's an increase of twenty-four thousand, but basically it's just a relocation for the majority of that. Within the Administration Department, it's a reduction of three point nine percent of twenty-four, about twenty-six thousand dollars. Most of that is related to a decrease in the PERS costs, adjustment of salaries, unemployment cost decrease, reduction in labor relations costs, human resources costs, risk management costs, and other general contract services. The City Attorney has no changes up or down, although new revenue is always welcome.
Can we start billing you out?
Within the Finance Department, that's an overall reduction of ten point six percent or about seventy-two thousand dollars, and again, that's salaries in PERS, reduction in health insurance costs, elimination of some contract service costs and contract tent services costs. The Planning Department, that's an overall budget increase of twenty-one percent, but realistically it's about forty thousand dollars, and that's directly related to the housing element update, rollover of some of the funds from twelve, thirteen, and participation in the CKAG Housing Element Update process for the reen cycle number five. Within the Building Department, that's an overall reduction of thirteen point six percent or about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, that's a reduction in health insurance costs, unemployment costs, some contract plan review and inspection costs, an increase in the contract for building and life safety based on thirteen, fourteen estimates, an increase of about thirty-four thousand, but that's offset by a corresponding increase in revenue on the other side. We are digitizing our microfilm, so that's an increase of about eleven thousand. We're increasing some computer equipment and software, vegetation of some hard copy plans, two thousand and eight forward, that's an increase of about eighteen thousand, and there's a decrease in the facilities construction front transfer of about eighty thousand. That's the bulk of that hundred and seventy-five. Within the interdepartmental department, there's a reduction of twenty-seven point three, all of that went into the City Council's budget, you saw most of it there. That's a reduction of about two hundred and nine thousand. There's a reduction of eighty thousand for contract services, a reduction in the contribution to the solid waste franchise, which caught up on the true-up, that's about eighty-four thousand, and a decrease due to the relocation of the City Council budget of about thirty-one thousand. Police Department has an increase of three percent, an impact of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and two. That's an increase in salary costs in partial due to some adjustments within the non, within the unrepresented employees for their pension obligation, and the addition of two recruitable positions beginning January first, that's an increase of total of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. There's a reduction in corresponding overtime as a result of that, forty thousand, reduction in some payouts of vacation, pension obligation costs, there's an increase. PERS employee retirement contribution is a corresponding decrease, an increase for the actives for health insurance, decrease in the health insurance costs for retirees, an increase in workers' compensation costs, decrease in vehicle maintenance costs, recruitment costs, and an increase in transfer for vehicle replacement, and some miscellaneous other costs, there are some oil and gas costs and some vehicle accessory costs. And one in here that's listed is the disaster emergency allocation of twenty thousand decrease, but that's talked about later in the budget when I'm going to go into some adjustments for July. The Public Works Department has an overall reduction of three percent or forty-three thousand. That's due to that swap again for employee salary costs versus their pension obligation. And then there's also a decrease in some unemployment costs, contract tree maintenance costs, building inspection improvement costs, and then an increase in some vehicle transfers for the depreciation basically over a five-year period of time to purchase vehicles. Comparatively, total operating expenditures were reduced three point nine percent from the initial twelve, thirteen budget, a decrease of about four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and a decrease of two point eight percent from even the revised mid-year budget, and that represents about two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Sure the council desire changes this evening, we can certainly bring those back as I'm suggesting for these other four at the July or August meetings, once staff has had an appropriate time to do a staff report for the council. But there are four items that were identified as part of the workshop and the goals workshop as well. One is potentially increasing the hours of code enforcement, we'll return that to the council July, August for the recommendation for that. The other is to add an allocation for emergency preparedness support. If Phil Lightman was still here, I think he's already left, he'd be interested in hearing that. Third is the increase of maintenance at the park or in within the town right of way, that was brought up at the workshop. And the last is to actually allocate funds for the Civic Center Master Plan. On the agenda this evening is the recommendation that you direct staff to negotiate with the primary consultant, but we have yet to come up with that number, so that will come back to the council as well. Any other changes the council may have this evening will be handled in the same way unless they're just minor, just within the budget. For the town's reserve and long-term liabilities, we have a reserve policy that has a set aside of fifteen percent of the annual general fund operating expenditures for emergencies, and then another twenty percent of the unassigned fund balance requirement. In total, this represents a thirty-five percent reserve requirement. In addition to these, the town also has a building department contingency for the operation of the building. The fiscal year thirteen, fourteen budget does meet these reserve requirements. In actual hard dollars, there's a fifteen percent emergency reserve of one point five six million, a twenty percent unassigned reserve of two point oh nine million, and a building contingency of four hundred and eleven thousand. Beyond these reserves, at the end of thirteen, fourteen, we also show an unallocated remaining general fund balance of four point eight nine million. During the May nine Finance Committee meeting and the May twentieth budget workshop, staff presented and discussed the five-year financial forecast. A forecast projected operational revenues and expenditures over the five-year window. Assumptions within the five-year window show property tax revenues of a three percent increase. And this past year, our property tax revenues increased by nine percent. ERAF and parcel tax revenue was flat, and expenditures between two and three percent increases. The result of that forecast showed general growth of that unallocated remaining general fund balance over the course of that five-year period of time. Staff advised that the Finance Committee and City Council what they could do with this unallocated general fund balance at the end of the year. We could look at it in three different ways. One is to pay down pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities at a faster rate than we are now. The five-year forecast suggests a contribution to internally created side funds that the town could pay down those early, given Councilmember Carlson's comments earlier this evening about the Moody rating of five point five percent for California versus CalPERS aggressive estimate of seven point five percent. It might be realistic for the town to create its own weather fund that we could use over the next, you know, five to ten years to pay off those liability projections early, and if CalPERS does make some drastic reductions in their discount rate, we can weather that storm out. At the council workshop on the twentieth, the council directed that the Finance Committee evaluate alternatives for this option and provide the council with a recommendation. It's anticipated that the Finance Committee will discuss this in the upcoming agenda and conduct an analysis of alternatives to present to the council in the coming months. Allocation of the amounts within the five-year forecasts are not mandatory, and if they're not made, it would simply result in a higher unallocated remaining general fund balance at year-end. So there's no sense of urgency to actually do this analysis, but it would be good to have that for the five-year financial forecast. You still have money in the bank to do that if all the other projections pan out. The allocations do not impact the fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, where that recommended operating budget for its reserves. You could, option two, contribute toward capital projects, you could do additional slurs on streets, do additional tree maintenance, do additional right-of-way improvements, choose the next highest bidder instead of the lowest responsible bidder, things like that. The third option is to increase the mandatory reserve. The council could increase the twenty percent reserve requirement to say thirty-five percent, that would give us a minimum fifty percent operational reserve, but also adding a fifty percent emergency reserve. It's recommended the Finance Committee evaluate all three options in combination with the five-year plan and come back to the council in the coming months. In conclusion, I again would like to commend staff's hard work on this budget. They put together a lot of hours putting it together and making it look like more of an educational document in addition to being the town's policy document moving forward. Special recognition again, as always, due to the Finance Department led by Robert, and I've been fortunate to have the staff onboard providing that dedicated service. That concludes this staff report, and we're here answering questions.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Again, this is an excellent, excellent presentation. I guess the good news is that it looks like we have a positive balance at the end of this fiscal year. Not a lot, but it looks like we're going in the right direction. So I'll bring it to council to, if you have any questions you want to ask staff at this time, otherwise I'd like to hear from the public as to their impression of this budget document. Any Councilmember questions?
I have some comments, but you want us to hold our comments.
Let's see if any public has any comments. Any member of the public want to say something about our budget document? If not, Councilmember Widmer, you're on.
Okay, first off, George and especially Robert, thank you for spending the time with me you did last week. Robert spent about two hours and fifteen minutes going over the budget with me as I missed the May meeting, so I appreciate the time, and I have to echo the mayor's comments that this is an excellent document. And I think that, you know, we started this trend last year with having, you know, a good working session, and I think it leads to a great product, and it leads to a lot of openness. So appreciate that, George, and appreciate your time, Robert, and thank you for that. I have a few comments on the items, and I've gone over those with Robert, so there shouldn't be any surprise. First off, again, and my comments are more of, more of a reflection that I would like staff to think about and staff also to consider moving forward. However, if you total up the impact of all the changes, it's a couple hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so I wanted to make sure that you understand that it's not going to impact my agreeing to move forward with this budget, but I do think that there are some things that we should consider as we move forward. Some of the great summary, George, there are some salary increases that are being offered to people. I'm not saying that they're deserved or they're not deserved. Last year, we had a nice working session with Deborah, and she ended up going through the potential, who would get those raises, especially when they were staff level with the council, and we all provided input, and I thought that that worked out quite well. Also, we talked, I guess during the revamping of the benefits plan of saying, let's have a pool and have a merit plan, and then the city manager would dull that out. That might not be a bad idea to set something up like that, and I think it should be considered. I think just automatic increases, especially in these austere times when no one else is getting them, I think is, it doesn't set a good precedent, but I'm not saying that some of the raises that are included in here are not deserved. I did notice that there's, over the last few years, as the recession hit, we cut back as private industry did, we cut back on memberships and certifications and things like that, and it looks like now that we're back in the black, happy times are here again. I don't think that we should be doing that. I think that we should be very, very judicious on the memberships that we join. I think I would like to ask staff to relook at that. I also would like to ask staff to consider that if a certification is required for the town, such as if we needed to have a CPA here and is in the job description, and every town has to have one, then I think that this town obligation to keep those certifications in place, I think that that's a reasonable expense to ask taxpayers to pay for. However, if we don't need those certifications, and it's not part of the job description, I think that's really more of a responsibility of the employee itself, because should they choose to leave here, they take those certifications and the town doesn't get them. We don't get any value out of it. So I think that that's another thing that the town should look at. It is minimal, but I did notice that memberships and certification fees have gone up substantially here in this budget, and I do think that they have not returned in the private industry, and I don't think that they should return here, just because finally, after many, many years, we've turned the budget around through a lot of hard work and through a lot of pain here, not only of employees who are no longer here, but also from the council and the residents that have had to go through this. It's all been working out well, but it's, we don't want to go back to those areas. The equipment refresh, we've had a lot of changes over the last years, and we do have a fairly substantial equipment refresh budget, and we're allocating a fair amount of money into it this year, and I think that we should take another look at it, possibly have the Finance Committee go look into that, because as we've skinny down our direct staff and we don't have as much equipment here, nor the need for as much equipment, because we've outsourced a lot of things, perhaps we should take another look at not making those reserves, okay? I don't want to cut off my nose despite my face, we do need to have funds there available for that, but I do believe that staff and the Finance Committee might want to go look into that. Last time we, well, the first time, we did a five-year financial forecast, the forecast was brought to the council, and the council had time, and also the Finance Committee had time to actually look at all the factors, do some trend analysis on what the real factors were out in the, in the industry. Here, we've taken, perhaps because of time, more or less of a broad brush, and we just assigned, I won't say arbitrary numbers, but three percent, two percent, and perhaps somewhat, we could have refined it a little bit better, and I think we should come up with better trending on those percentages, and I would recommend that we do that moving forward, because you just can't broad brush two percent, three percent, because that's going to get you into trouble, and it doesn't give you a good position. I've brought up many times, and this is my last item, the use of contract and temporary labor. We have temporary labor, and in this budget, we're replacing a temporary part-time person with a full-time person. A full-time person comes with a substantial budget burden due to not only the health care, but also pension capabilities, and those are long-term costs that aren't just periodic, but they also contribute to our long-term, the long-term obligation, which in some of these charts during the May sessions, I noticed you adequately pointed out, are growing obligations for post-employment issues, and I think that we need to take a very serious and a very hard look at that. We've, you know, if we don't need to add full-time employees, I think that we should take a very hard look at bringing in part-time or contract employees. It's working very well with what we've done so far, and it's working very well in the private industry. You don't have to own the employees. So that is my last comment, but again, but I don't want my comments to come across negative. Robert, you did a great job, and I do appreciate the time you spent with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember like to make a comment?
Yeah. This comment's on page seven where you have talked about general fund alternatives. It'd be my two cents worth. Seems to me it would be very prudent to pay down pensions and other post-employment benefits, but that'd be the first priority, I think, that as you mentioned, the Moody's have changed in discount rate to being lower to five point five percent. One of the things that I think Councilman Dobby and I have advocated is putting together a balance sheet that would reflect the best guess at these long-term liabilities as to what the town's financial situation would then be. I think in terms of trying to provide information to the public regarding the necessity to vote for the parcel tax, that having that kind of information, making it visible and understandable is a priority that should be addressed. I think that, in my mind, a second priority would, the use of these funds, or the second priority would be for capital projects, and here I would suggest that other funding sources need to be found to do this additional investment in our capital projects, grants or other new sources. One example might be that if someday there's a transfer tax on properties sold or a utility tax approved by the voters, consider investing a good portion of the funds in improving the infrastructure of town through capital projects. I don't think that there's a lot of reasons at this point in time to consider increasing the reserves to, by any significance. I think the best return of the money, the best way to save money in the long term is to pay down the pensions and other post-employment benefits and see if you can't find other funds for the capital projects. I think one of the things that this budget does, I think, is to, again, emphasize the importance of parcel tax. Parcel tax seems to be essential to this town. Hopefully it'll pass in November to allow council to look at other alternatives and options. The intent, four years ago, was to do this, but unfortunately, council got sidetracked, and it would be very important to keep an eye on the goal and not allow other issues to sidetrack you again. Already six months has gone by, half the term of this year's council. It just takes quite a while to do the research and get all the information together, and so I would urge you, hopefully the parcel tax will pass, to get busy on looking at other revenue sources. My final comment right now is that the, there's a comment made on page thirteen about the general fund unassigned balance. Description says in no circumstances shall the general fund's unassigned balance fall below twenty percent of the actual operating expenses. There must be some reason or some time that that unassigned general fund balance could and should be used, and I think the statement here is just too, needs to be, needs to be changed to some extent. One more comment is, I'm happy to see that the interdepartmental department, that you are taking a look at that and reclassifying some of those expenses. I think there's still a, one expense in there for a bag membership that maybe could be put into one of the other departments, but basically there's HR-type expenses and insurance-type expenses that remain there, and maybe that's the best way to handle it. There's also accounting tax administrative costs in that interdepartmental, interdepartmental statement. Maybe that ought to be in the Finance Department, since I think that Robert probably is the one that really has the, I guess the overall problem I have with this interdepartmental budget is that you don't know who's responsible, who's accountable for these various line items, and I think that there needs to be some clear accountability that's assigned or to sign up. I'm sure you have your, staff member that has a responsibility, so I'll end with those comments.
Thank you very much. So my comments are that, again, the good news is we have a positive balance, and that is not without a lot of heartache and hard work by staff, and staff's willingness to do more with less for these past few years. But it doesn't mean that we don't have future liabilities that we have to be aware of and plan for, and we can't be cavalier and take our eye off the ball. We've been working on a very, very restrictive budget. I remember back in two thousand and nine when we set aside the fifteen percent emergency disaster reserve fund and the twenty percent of the unassigned fund policy that Councilmember Carlson commented on. It was after the two thousand and eight crash, and we were just, you know, scrambling and wanting to make sure that if, and our reserves were being eaten up on an annual basis, and it was that, it wasn't rosy at all, we thought to at least have, you know, some reserves, and that is the minimum amount that we could really have taken away from our operating capital to put in reserves, the fifteen percent for disaster, emergency disaster, and twenty percent unassigned fund balance. So that's kind of a minimum, thirty-five percent total. I think that going forward, we may want to beef that up a little bit and to maybe forty percent or forty-five percent. The other things that I really think that if you're going to look at this budget, look at page, pages seven and eight, the long reserve policies, long-term liabilities, the things that we need to be looking at and not taking our attention away from is the OPEB liabilities and our capital projects, how we can allocate some of our additional reserves to pay that off, and, as City Manager said, we do have the Finance Committee taking a look at how that could be structured, whether it's a straight-line amortization or some kind of a increasing scale over time to pay it off in five or ten years, something like that, but it's something that we really need to take a look at. Our property tax revenue is up, and the really bad times do appear to be behind us, but now is, now is the important task is to operate our town fairly and reasonably. I think that we've got the right team together. Our city manager really does understand how to run a town, and he understands the finances. We've got an excellent finance director who really does know how to run the numbers. Chief, Department has the chief of police, knows how to recruit. The, just to make a point that the increase in the two positions is solely as like placeholders so that our chief of police can recruit when members of our police force are out on disability, and we're still paying them for disability for like the next year, and they're not, it's not a vacancy, and so, but it takes nine months to a year to recruit good police officers. Mr. Gero knows this, and so without having the vacancy, we have to add that position. So that's where the police department's increase came from. It's not that we're adding more officers. So I'd like to thank our staff again. This is a wonderful document. Thank you, Robert, thank you, Mike, and Lisa, and Ed, and Theresa, and all the work that you've done. So I'd like, yes.
Could I make just a couple more comments?
Yes.
Going back in the capital budget section of the, which is at the back of the book.
Yes, the green tab, have a payment project? What page are you looking at?
Well, I think it's one thirty-six. It talks about the budgets by category, one thirty-six is green, actually. And there you see that over, over a period- And there you see that over a period, that only $375,000 is, right now, they've looked at as money available for drinking, and that's often in the parcel tax. And so it goes back to my earlier comment about needing to find other revenue sources to do some of these capital budgets. I think that if you go, kind of go through the various pages here, you see how often parcel tax is playing a key role in providing those funds. So again, parcel tax is an important element. As far as street light replacement on page 138, there is a program that I mentioned to the staff of a interest-free million-dollar loan that is available for energy-type purposes via CCG, and I've forgotten exactly what the details are, but I think staff might want to take a look at that type of additional funds, particularly when it's interest-free. Again, you've got to pay it back, so where's that money going to come from? And then, I think that probably covers the points I wanted to make, is the importance of the property tax and just the importance of trying to find some additional funds.
Yeah.
It may be, for example, the channel.
Marsh Road.
Well, I approve Marsh Road and possible covering the channel there, but you might also want to think about Watkins downstream and covering the channel there and really making that a safer pedestrian bike right-of-way than it is today, but those are just some thoughts.
Thank you.
We'd like to just add one, just right onto what Jerry was saying. One of the things that Robert and I spoke about, and I know we brought it up when we were talking about the channel, in fact, every time we talked about the channel. The issue with the channel is that a lot of water goes through. It's not all of our water. You know, the channel and the drainage, in many cases, is a regional problem, and we really need to work with our jurisdictions around here to get everybody to chip in. If Marsh Road collapses, as you know, it's going to impact Redwood City, it's going to impact Menlo Park, as well as Atherton. So, you know, we need to make sure, as we do every year, we say every year, but we really don't follow through, but we need to do more looking for grants and getting other jurisdictions to also chip in where it is a jurisdictional or a regional issue. And Robert and I spoke about that when we went over that. I appreciate you bringing it up, Jerry, because that's one of the things that I brought up with him as well. And so hopefully, you know, we'll take that to heart, and it doesn't all have to be on our nickel.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point, actually, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget as presented.
Move.
Councilwoman Carlson moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Ruiz, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minister of the House, thank you very much.
One thing you might highlight for the public's benefit is page 140 of Capital Projects is the hybrid beacon.
You know, I had a note in here about that.
It's funded with parcel tax.
Right, the hybrid. So El Camino Real is very dangerous for pedestrians to cross, and we've been working with our Public Works Director, Mike Hashwagi, and Caltrans to figure out what we can do to make it safer. They won't put in-ground lights, but they, there is something that Mike discovered and we're sending to them, and that they have approved. It's called a hybrid beacon, and it's actually pedestrian-activated, and it's a triangle, and it goes from flashing yellow to red, and so when a pedestrian has to cross. And so we're looking to install one or more of those along the Alcádino corridor. Do you want to add anything about that, Mike?
No, you said it perfectly.
Thank you. Okay. So, you know, that's part of the parcel tax allocations. So it is a very critical part of our capital improvement, road safety budget. So we have passed our fiscal 1314 budget.
If I can add one thing real quick?
Oh, sure, yes.
I want to say thank you to the council and to Mayor for your kind words, but again, I want to reiterate, big thanks to staff, couldn't have done it without City Manager, George Rodriguez, Teresa, Chief Ed, Lisa, Mike, Steve Tyler, great team, it was a collective team effort, and yeah, couldn't have done it without them, and my staff as well. So it's good to be a part of the great team and having council workshops and stuff.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you.
We had some good council workshops and a lot of transparency in public meetings. Okay, we're going to go on to item number 20. It's the Master Fee Schedule Adoption Resolution and amended Town Master Fee Schedule. The report is to be given by our Finance Director, Robert Behring III, and I know that we have our consultant here if we have any questions on it. So Robert, you want to just kind of tee this up for us?
Yes. Our consultant, Dan Eds from Capitol County Partners, is here to discuss our Master Fee Schedule. It was last updated in the fiscal year 0910, and as our town's models have changed, staffing levels and other concerns, council in July 2012 decided to engage in services of Capitol County Partners to do a fee schedule update and study. So Mr. Eds prepared a full cost, direct cost allocation, planned calculated productive hourly rates of staff, and contract position, also did a contract user fee. So he's going to present the project, what he did, and some of the findings on that project and on these fees. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Eds.
So I appreciate you coming and to talk to us about this. I must say that from my perspective, I mean, I'd like to see your presentation, but I don't want to put you through a lot of exercise if I could get some consensus from the council. I believe this is a very important topic. I believe that council deserves an opportunity, and you deserve an opportunity to present to council in a less formal and less time-constrained environment in a study session. All of these numbers.